Good morning and welcome to the September 15th meeting of the Committee on Special Populations. Today, we will be talking about disproportionality and it will be a robust discussion on this. We are going to talk about disproportionality through two lenses of identification and also discipline. We have not discussed these topics at the table for a while and identifying students correctly for service and we want to make sure that we're serving them well. We're joined by our experts from the Special Education Department and they will provide us with information about our current status and what we're doing to improve our position and the obstacles that we face. So, welcome everyone and at this time, I'd like to have everyone introduce himself or herself and we'll start with Carla and Rebecca.
Good morning, Carla Silvestri.
Good morning, Rebecca Simontraski.
Oh, it's Sabrina.
Good morning, I'm Sabrina Hernandez, the recorder for the Board of Education.
Good morning, I'm Lori Christina Webb, I'm the Chief of Staff for the Board of Education.
Good morning, Philip Lynch, Director of Special Education.
Good morning, Diana Wiles, Acting Associate Superintendent for the Office of Special Education.
Thank you.
Now, are there any questions about the informational summary from the last meeting?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
You're okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you then, we'll just move on to Ms. Wiles and Mr. Lynch.
Good morning, again, board members, we appreciate the opportunity to present to you this morning on this very important and relevant topic to our work in both the Office of Special Education as well as for our general education students. Again, my name is Diana Wiles, I'm the Acting Associate Superintendent for the Office of Special Education and we will be presenting today on the issue of disproportionality in special education in one of the areas, in the areas of identification and discipline. Next slide. During today's meeting, we will focus on two broad topics. The first will be a foundational understanding of what disproportionality is as it relates to our work in both the Office of Special Education and in OSSWB. We'll talk about the guidelines by which the Maryland State Department of Education identifies school systems as disproportionate. In the second portion, we will discuss the implementation of the CCEIS grant, which is the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services Grant, which is the grant that guides our work as it relates to disproportionality. We'll provide you some data for the several years where we've been collecting on the areas of disproportionality in identification and discipline of students. After each of these sections, we will stop and allow you to have an opportunity to ask any questions you may have. And the final slide will give you some references as to where the data we've collected and some additional information in the area of disproportionality.
Thank you.
Next slide. Significant disproportionality is described as a trend of students of certain racial or ethnic groups being identified for special education services placed in more restrictive educational settings because of the special education services they receive, or it is discipline that is deemed at a much higher rate than their peers. Our work in disproportionality and to reduce disproportionality aligns with the strategic plan for MCPS as well as the Board's priorities. In the area of academic excellence and improving math and literacy rates, it's important for us to focus on disproportionality and its impact because it has an impact on the rate of college career and community readiness. It decreases rates of literacy and mathematics achievement and it causes inequitable educational opportunities when students are over-identified and when they are placed in more restrictive environments. As it relates to the well-being of students, disproportionality for school removals continues the implicit and explicit biases that are practiced in instruction and in discipline for students of color and for students who have disabilities. The work that we do in MCPS has to address the root causes of our disproportionality and our call to action is on the issue, on this issue is highlighted by the impact disproportionality has on our students and communities. If we do not immediately decisively and collaboratively address this issue, it impacts our students significantly. Federal law requires us to look at disproportionality based on a minimum of two years of data in 14 categories of analysis in seven racial or ethnic groups. Next slide. The categories of analysis relate to the identification of students in the age of three to 21, identification of students with disabilities in the following impairment areas: intellectual disabilities, specific learning disabilities, emotional disturbance, speech and language impairments, and other health impairment, which could include identification of attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, and other medical issues and diagnoses, and autism. Next slide. Further categories of analysis that are considered when identifying disproportionality are placements of children with disabilities ages six to 21 in two specific placements. The first is where students are outside of regular education classrooms for more than 40% of their school day and the second is where students are placed in separate schools, including residential facilities, correctional facilities, and private schools. With regard to discipline of children ages three to 21, the categories of consideration are out-of-school discipline for what, less than 10 days, out-of-school discipline for more than 10 days, and then in-school suspension for less than or more than 10 days, and the total number of removals. Next slide. The racial and ethnic groups that are considered when we look at disproportionality for our students are listed in this slide that's currently being presented. Our Hispanic students, American Indian students, Alaskan Native, Asian, African-American, Native Hawaii, and other Pacific Islanders, white students, and students who identify with more, with two or more races. At this time, next slide. At this time, we'll pause and if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Ms. Simontraski?
Not yet.
Not yet. Wait, I did have...
I have that question.
Maybe you're going to come to this, but I don't remember seeing it, of course, I miss things. What category or categories are places where African-American and Latino students are disproportionately identified? I couldn't figure out the categories because they were pretty specific, so how does this happen?
So, we will get to that in detail, but I can say just briefly that when we look at disproportionality, it's the cross-section. So, are African-American students disproportionately identified, for example, with intellectual disabilities?
That's the question I was asking.
Yes. Are Hispanic students disproportionately identified, or disproportionately removed in the suspension, in any of the one suspension categories? So, it could be out-of-school suspensions for more than 10 days. And so, we will go into later in the presentation where specifically MCPS has been identified as disproportionate.
Yeah, thank you, because the, that's my question about the intellectual disabilities, it's kind of a broad, anyhow, okay, thank you.
In Maryland, a local school system is identified as being significantly disproportionate in one of the previously mentioned categories of analysis of race/ethnicity through what is called a risk ratio measure. So, again, we look at the cross-section of race and ethnicity as it relates to the identification, placement, and removal of students. This analysis is for two consecutive years, so I'll get to the actual, how it's identified, but the analysis is for the previous two years of data that MSD would review. The risk ratio compares the removal rate of each student group in a school to the removal rate of all other students in that school or in that school district. It captures whether the risk of removal for a student in one student group, for example, Latinx students, is lower or higher than the risk of removal for a student in a comparison group. And this is calculated annually by MSD. Next slide. In order to understand the, how the risk ratio measure and how disproportionality is identified, there's a basis of knowledge that you need. First is to understand what risk is and how it's defined in the law. Risk is a measure of likelihood of a particular outcome, the likelihood of identification, for example, as a student with a disability in a specific disability category. The risk is expressed as a proportion and calculated based on race or ethnicity. The risk ratio is a standardized formula that equates to a numerical comparison of risk of a particular outcome for any of the identified racial or ethnic groups and the risk of the same outcome for the comparison group. So, for example, the state would look at whether or not, what is the risk ratio for students, African-American or Black students, to be identified as students with emotional disabilities when they are compared to all other students in all of the other racial groups to determine if there's disproportionality? Or what is the risk of Hispanic or Latinx students to be suspended when compared to all other racial categories, racial or ethnic category groups? Next slide. The risk ratio threshold is the numerical representation of what the state determines as disproportionate. So, each state could have a different risk ratio threshold. States set the risk ratio threshold based on the following factors. The risk ratio threshold must be reasonable in light of all of the facts and circumstances for that school system. It must consider the racial and ethnic composition of the state and LEA. There must be consideration for enrollment demographics in the LEA. And the factors are correlated with various disabilities. Risk ratio thresholds may be different for various racial/ethnic groups and depending on whether the analysis is for identification of special education, the placement, or discipline. So, in short, what that means is we could have a different risk ratio threshold for any of our racial or ethnic groups in any of these categories. It's highly specific to what our demographics look like in special education and overall for all of our students. Next slide. Here's an example from the Maryland State Department of Education. If we assume that there is equal risk for all ethnic and racial subgroups, our risk ratio starts at one, which means there is no added risk to an African-American student versus a white student versus an Asian student for any of the three categories, identification, more restrictive placements, or discipline. In the example provided by MSD, if we assume we have 20 African-American students out of 100 who are removed from a school, the removal rate is 20%. Then, the state will, in a specific formula that's used across LEAs, they will calculate the, for non-African-American students, what is the percentage or the likelihood, the risk ratio, for any other student to be removed. In this particular rate, for all of the students who are non-African-American, the risk ratio is 6.67%. This means that of the 20 students, or 20% of African-American students who are removed, the risk ratio is 3.0. The higher the risk is, the more that there's a likelihood of disproportionality. Once a school system is in that ratio over 2.0, they are considered disproportionate. Therefore, the risk of removal in this example for African-American students is three times higher than the risk of removal for all other students at a school. Next slide. So, a few things to note. The risk ratio threshold does not mean that the goal is for there to be no risk to a specific racial or ethnic group. Rather, it is the threshold that indicates the point at which the local school system is disproportionate. Even if we are not disproportionate according to MSD's calculations and the standard that they set annually, we are, the work of our office and of OSSWB is to ensure that we can reduce that risk as much as possible. And not only maintain numbers that are below the state's threshold, but to work collaboratively with our structures within MCPS to reduce any disproportionality in the areas of identification, placement, and discipline.
What's the office you work with?
Office of Special Education.
Oh, no, I...
I'm sorry, I meant the OSSWB.
Office of School Support and Wellbeing.
Oh, God, thank you.
Okay.
We change the names of our departments so frequently anymore.
And I'd just like to pause for a second to give my colleague an opportunity to present, introduce herself.
Thank you so much. My name is Shawna K. Jorandby, I'm the Director of Student Engagement, Behavioral Health and Academics, representing today the Office of Student Support and Wellbeing and specifically the Office of Wellbeing, Learning, Achievement.
Thank you. An apologies for the word salad. The alphabet salad, I should say.
Exactly.
Next slide. An identified local school system must reserve 15% of federal IDEA Part B funds to provide comprehensive coordinated early intervening services to address root causes of the identified area of significant disproportionality. So, what that means is our IDEA funds, federal funds, that flow directly into the Office of Special Education to support our students, when we are identified as disproportionate in any of those areas, 15% of the funds that we would typically get would be set aside for CCEIS work to reduce disproportionality. The funds are used to serve both general education and special education students aged three through 21. And this reallocation leaves 85% of federal IDEA Part B funds to provide for, specifically provide for students with disabilities who receive services under the IDEA. Next slide. At this time, we'll pause for any questions.
I have one quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you're looking at these numbers, are you only looking at students in special education or are you looking, for the disciplinary aspect of it, are you looking county-wide, system-wide?
We look system-wide and the calculation compares our students with disabilities with students with non, with their non-disabled peers. The advantage of the grant is that the 15% that's reallocated for the work is used for both general education and special education students. So, if we are in fact disproportionate in any of the areas, the work is to get the number down for all students. Other questions?
Carla? Just on, do we have statistics on placement, private placements?
We do have data on private placements, I don't have that data with me right now, but I can certainly provide it to the Board.
Yeah, okay. I don't think there's anything else.
We'll now move on to discuss how disproportionality for students with disabilities is mitigated through the implementation of our CCEIS grant using IDEA Part B funds. Phil Lynch is the Director of Department of Special Education Services and will take us into the next section related to implementation of CCEIS. Next slide.
Good morning, so this is the portion of the presentation where we'll get more into the specifics about where we sit in Montgomery County currently. I'm going to give a little bit of a historical perspective, talk about where we are today, and then we'll talk about the CCEIS grant and the activities that are currently in place and that we're looking forward to. So, the two areas where we are currently considered significantly disproportionate in Montgomery County public schools is in the identification area for one category, it's identification of students with emotional disabilities who are in the group, the demographic group of Native American and Alaskan Native. It's a very small group of students, but we are considered, because of that risk ratio calculation that Ms. Wiles went through, we are considered significantly disproportionate for that small group for identification. Remember, there are three areas: identification of disabilities, the placement, and the disciplinary removals or suspensions categories. So, for identification, it's that group of students with emotional disabilities in that demographic. The other area where we are considered significantly disproportionate is the disciplinary removal for Black or African-American students with disabilities, and I'll get into more specifics around that in a few minutes. The work that we undertake through the CCEIS grant has to impact, you know, all offices and all schools, it's something that we do collectively, but in terms of taking the lead on it, Ms. Shawna K. Jorandby, who introduced herself earlier, is one of our key partners in that work when we look at the activities and who takes kind of the leadership on some of those activities and works with our other offices. So, she will be helping me share some of that work in a few minutes. So, next slide. So, this will give you a bit of a historical perspective, I know the font here is small, but the first box on this table references the first time that MCPS was found to be significantly disproportionate in any of these areas. And that was in the 2019-2021 school year. And these ratios have been around for much longer, but this was the first time in which we were found disproportionate. And it was in the area during that year of significant disproportionality for disciplinary removals of Black and African-American students in one slice of that category or that area, which was for the removal of students for more than 10 days. So, that was in 2019-2020 and that's where we really began our work. So that was in 2019-2020, and that's where we really began our work. We were required to write our first CCEIS grant and to implement our activities and began down that road. We know that we were, you know, interrupted with the pandemic in the midst of that work, and so that work continues, but that was our first area. The second was during the 2021-2023 school year, and you can see that we were found significantly disproportionate in not only the area of disciplinary, I'm sorry, in all other areas of disciplinary removal. So it was still within the category of disciplinary removal, but that category carries those other subsets. So it was in the area of disciplinary removal for Black, African-American students for less than 10 days. So that might be for looking at students who are suspended for one day, two days, three days, but it doesn't reach that 10-day threshold. So we were found disproportionate in that area, and it was at a rate of 2.46. So that would be, you know, close to two and a half more times likely if you fell into that category to be suspended or removed. Disciplinary removals for students for more than 10 days, Black African-American students for more than 10 days, and that was, at that point, our highest area of significant disproportionality. So a student with a disability who is Black or African-American was almost five times more likely to be suspended for more than 10 days. That's what that piece of data is saying. And disciplinary removals in total. So when you look at the total, that means students less than 10 days, more than 10 days, in-school suspensions are also a part of that total, and also students who might be removed for what we call a 45-day placement. So that last category is the total. So you can see from the 2021-2023 CCEIS or significant disproportionate data, that's where we fell. There was a year in the middle there where we were not found significantly disproportionate. So we had that one year with the suspensions, and then because of progress that we made, we were not found significantly disproportionate, and then we were found significantly disproportionate for those multiple disciplinary removal categories. So now we come to where we sit currently. So where we sit currently is that we now have been found significantly disproportionate in an additional one of those areas, the identification area that I referenced for students with emotional disabilities who fall into that American Indian-Alaska Native category. In addition, we, in MCPS, even though the data, and you see those blank dots there, the data is not there to really give us the supporting information we need because that represents the period in time when we were in virtual learning. And so technically, the state did not find us significantly disproportionate in that previous areas of disciplinary removal because we didn't have that suspension data because we were in that virtual learning period. But we have continued that work, and we are going to continue to focus on that area with the understanding that that, you know, continues to be an area of focus for us in this most recent application of the CCEIS grant. So if we go to the next slide. When you write the grant using those 15% of funds that Ms. Wiles referenced, we need to focus on the root causes. And so you go through a process of a root cause analysis. You look at the data that you have available to you. You get input from different stakeholder groups, and these are the root causes that MCPS has identified that we need to then focus on, or work on. So those include inconsistent implementations of policies and practices. So that might look like schools implementing our code of conduct or disciplinary practices differently across schools. Inconsistent implementation of interventions. So that means there may be schools applying those early interventions at different levels or different rates or different intensities. A lack of continuum of supports and services. So this is making sure that all of our schools have the supports and services that they require, and then also implicit and explicit biases when it comes to applying those disciplinary removals. So those are what MCPS has identified as its root causes. Next slide. When you are writing this grant, and you look at your root causes, you need to then come up with what is referred to as a planned response activity. So you say, you know, here's the area that we need to focus on. Here is what we are saying, the root cause. And then what is the activity that you're going to do to try to get at that? So this list right here are some of the activities that we've designed in order to address that over-identification of that subgroup that we referenced. So we're going to be looking at professional learning around our current policies and procedures for how you identify a student with an emotional disability. So we want to make sure, for example, that all of our educational, our teams, our IEP teams, our school psychologists, that those folks are following the current policies and procedures consistently across all schools. So we know that there are very specific criteria for identifying a student with an emotional disability. There are actually multiple layers of criteria. It involves, in our system, it involves a peer review of a psychologist's actual report. So there are all these checkpoints along the way that are designed to make sure that we are not over-identifying students with emotional disabilities. And so we want to make sure that all of the team members, the psychologists, and everybody involved in that process are utilizing that process in the way that it's intended, so that would involve some professional development. We want to look at a file review for those students that have been identified so that we can determine if there were some patterns there that need to be revisited. And then also, look at data from specific schools to say, you know, there are specific schools that appear to be over-identifying students in this category and do target professional development in that area. So those are the activities that are currently identified to address that identification area of over-representation. Next slide. And then our goal there would be able to bring that category back within that 2.0 risk ratio. That would be our goal, and so that's the goal that's stated in that work. Next slide. So this would be monitored on a quarterly basis. We would look over the course of a year, you know, are students identifying, are schools identifying students in that category? And are we seeing a spike in some areas? And we would monitor our progress through those reviews of that data. We can, we have a way of seeing centrally, you know, how students are being identified through our educational system, online educational system. Next slide. These are lists of the activities, or a description and summary of the activities that are designed to address the area of disciplinary removals. So this would be for our suspensions. So leadership teams at identified schools, so looking at the suspension data, identifying the schools that are suspending students in those categories at the highest rates, working with those leadership teams to engage in a review of their data to make sure that they're familiar with their data, and then having them participate in a professional learning series that would be designed to look at the best practices for those early interventions, and helping them develop plans to modify their current practices. So that would be one activity. Another activity would also be making sure that we're working with parents. Oftentimes, there are, what we see in this data are that there are students who are really impacting the data significantly by being suspended over and over and over again. There are students for whom we need to come up with other solutions for, you know, that need to be addressed specifically with support of those families, and so working with those parents. And then also, looking at the use of our resources, our social workers, our behavior support teachers, who are directly involved in those early intervening practices and are involved in those multi-tier practices for supporting students who may have social, emotional, behavioral needs, who are currently sitting in the schools. Next slide. Additional activities would include on-the-job embedded professional development using our restorative justice teams and our well-being teams. Those would be under the direction of Ms. Jorandby. And so she's going to, she's directly involved in that work, and she's directly involved in helping me to design those activities as we put those into the grant. And then also, the implementation of de-escalation strategies, the training of staff around de-escalation strategies. Most of you are familiar with the current practices that we use, the nonviolent crisis intervention training that we have in Montgomery County. There are aspects of that training that are really focused around de-escalation, and so making sure that those strategies are being made available to schools in a wider, in a broader spectrum, as well as implementing a new practice that we have undertaken called UQ-RU, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, which is a response to some changes in legislation. Next slide. So back to the goals, and so the goals right now are written so that we will be reducing those suspension rates for Black African-American students by 50% by September of '24. That's the way our goal is written, so we would like to be able to cut that in half and reduce suspension of Black African-American students with disabilities in that, in our current programs for students, our special education programs for students with social, emotional needs by 5% as compared to other students in those special education services. We have some specific interventions that we are using within that subgroup, and to reduce the physical restraints of students by 20%, which I'll get into a little bit later on in terms of that connection. Next slide. So these are our evaluation methods. So we look at that disaggregated data for disciplinary removals. So it's looking at it by those different subgroups to make sure, you know, we are on track, and we're, you know, as the next slide will discuss, you know, we're required to report that, those progress out over twice a year. Data from our restorative justice observations, and disaggregated data from our physical restraint data. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jorandby because she's going to talk a little bit about some of the work that has been going on and its impact. As I said in my little historical perspective, you know, this work started in 2019-2020 school year with the introduction of those, some of those activities where we were working with the teams, the schools that had the highest rate of suspensions, where they were being made aware of their data. They were working through some, they worked through some professional development activities, and then some, and they worked on revising their plans for suspensions and disciplinary removals of students. And so Ms. Jorandby is going to talk a little bit about some of the progress and how we're doing in that area, so.
Next slide, please. So we want to take a look at all that we have dialogued about today and look at it in terms of what our data journey has been. Mr. Lynch has discussed our continued plans to address disproportionate suspensions as well as identification of students. And I would like to talk a little bit about the impact of some of the strategies that have been put in place, including some specifically identified by Mr. Lynch as a part of the CCEIS grant, and others still that have had to do with policy changes within recent years and practices, changes over the last few years as well. We are working to eliminate inequities within our system, and so we're going to start to look at suspensions for schools that have been previously identified as disproportionate and what the data says about them. So just to clarify, the data that we're looking at is not overall MCPS data. It is specific to the schools that were previously identified as disproportionate. Next slide, please. So when we take a look at this data, we're looking at two years in particular. So we're looking at the 2018-2019 school year. One of the reasons for that is because that was our last full year not impacted by COVID. So it's a full year's dataset of suspensions. We are also looking at last school year, our most recent completed school year, where students were back in person, full-time in the building. So to see where we've gone from that time until now when it comes to suspensions. We'll first look up at the suspensions for our high schools. And the arrows that are green are showing a reduction in suspensions from 1819 to 2122. Arrows that are red show an increase in the number of suspensions from 1819 to 2122. And as you can see, in our nine identified disproportionate high schools, for the most part, suspensions are on the way down. Even for the schools that are identified, for example, High School 3, High School 7, and High School 8, there's a small bump. We have to do some specific work with High School Number 2, but you can see, generally speaking, that some of what has been put in place has worked at those specific sites. Overall, suspensions dropped for those disproportionate schools from 720 suspensions in the 1819 school year to 607 suspensions in the last full school year, 2122. Next slide, please. We're looking at the same data from middle school. Once again, this is overall suspension, all students, all demographics, across the schools that were previously identified as disproportionate. And so of the seven identified middle schools, you can see six out of seven of those schools have had, I would, what I would consider some major gains in reduction of suspensions. We do have one school there, I can't fail to acknowledge it. I mean, we're looking at it, and if you want to talk about it later, we can. One school here that has had an increase in suspensions, and those are for a variety of factors. Next slide, please. Taking a look at elementary schools. Elementary schools have had a consistent decrease in the number of overall suspensions for the schools that were identified as disproportionate. Next slide, please. Now we're going to take a look at a dataset that is specific to students receiving special education services. So the first three slides we looked at for those schools were for overall student population, so all suspensions. The next three that we're going to take a look at are for suspensions of students receiving special education services. And if you take a look at high school, you'll see some similar trends. A little bit better here for high schools when it comes to specific student populations. So you can see, High School Number 2 again is represented as suspensions being increased. High School Number 3, but for all other schools, there've been a reduction overall in suspensions. Next slide, please. Taking a look at middle school, the same trend applies to the overall population as it does to students identified for special education services, with the exception of Middle School Number 4. And then there's a little bump there on Middle School Number 3 when it comes to students identified for special education services. But generally speaking, suspensions have been reduced a great deal. And next slide, please. For the elementary school, the trend for our overall student population when it comes to suspensions, as well as our students with identified special education services when it comes to suspensions, have remained true, and our elementary schools have seen a great reduction in the number of suspensions of students, both overall and students who are receiving special education services. Once again, these only represent the schools that were previously identified as disproportionate. They don't represent our full 210 schools. So as applies to the grant. And next slide, please. At this time, we'll take questions about this portion of the presentation.
Carla? This is not the end, right?
No.
Okay, let's see. Thank you. I guess I wanted to ask, you mentioned this time period and a grant. But has this type of work been going on for years and years and years? Is this a regular process check in special education? Or it's not a new thing?
You're correct. So this work comes to us in multiple ways. You know, the work of disproportionality is not new. The work of significant disproportionality is newer, but it's a different and higher level of, you know, of designation for, you know, for us to consider through the federal government regulations. And so, but the work of disproportionality has been around for quite a while. So for example, I referenced earlier that example of that practice that we have in place for identification of students with emotional disabilities. That's based on the fact that at some point in time, there was a period where Montgomery County was considered to be at a rate of identification for students with emotional disabilities that needed to be reviewed for whatever that category was. And so those practices, and that was a little bit before my time, And so those practices, and I, and that was a little bit before my time, so those practices were put in place to, to, as an insurance assurance that we had these extra layers of, of review for students being considered with emotional disabilities. So that, so this work has been around for, for a while, and by the way, that also, that additional layer is also in place for students being identified for, for intellectual disabilities. So that, the work is, the work itself is not new, but it comes to us in different ways, and this category of significant disproportionality is a higher level of, of review.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, MSDE monitors our identification of students, our removals of students. The distinction with the CCEIS grant is that there's funding associated with our correction of any disproportionality. In other ways, whereas Mr. Lynch said this work comes to us, we may be required by MSDE to do some corrective action, we may be monitored more closely, so there are other ways that outside of this grant, we're required to ensure that students are not disproportionate in the areas of identification, suspension, and placement.
I'd like to say too that what this allows for is a specific focus. So a lot of the work that we do that might impact all schools or all programs, whether that is in special education or whether it's in the Office of Students' Point Well-Being, might impact all schools. Being able to see the 20 schools identified allows us to focus our work more deeply at those specific sites, with those specific staff, within those specific programs, in order to make sure that we have equitable outcomes for all of our students.
And it, it also allows us to take a more preventive approach. So, you know, when you look at the, the data around a, a group that is significantly disproportionate for any of those areas, that's really the symptom of something else, right? So that's the end, that, you know, that's, you know, that's the fever. And so when you, you know, when somebody's sick, you don't just address, you know, the fever's part of it, you want to get their temperature down, but you also want to look at why you got sick. And so what this allows us to do is to use these grant funds to, across, you know, general education and special education, to go backwards, so look at, well, what was the referral process, I'm just using this example, that's, that kicked all of this, this off for this student or for these group of students that sent us down this path? What initiated this, and, and what do we need to do at the, at the earlier stages, whether it be for identification of a, of a disability, or whether it be for a disciplinary removal that, that we need to address in those earlier stages?
And I saw in the slides that there's a quarterly review. I'm interested in how the support actually happens in the school. So you identify one of the, the red schools. At what point, is it part of school improvement? Do you make time elsewhere?
So it's through a number of processes, including some that are standardized across schools, for example, the school improvement planning process, thank you for bringing that up, but then also specified to those schools. So my colleague, Mr. Lynch, talked about one of the actions that, that we're working on is an increased focus on restorative practices and restorative justice within identified schools. What that might look like is we have funding this year where we have expanded from three RJ specialists to nine specialists, being able to serve each area. And instead of serving each area through professional development, RJ walkthroughs, helping the schools to create goals and action planning, our specialists now are also, two days a week, assigned as a home base in those school environments that need the most support when it comes to this. And so the learning is not just at the macro level or at the planning level through goal setting and school improvement, but also a little bit more now at the micro level, right? We can drill down even further. What teachers do we need to work with? What strategies do we need to work on? What is admin's approach and philosophy towards discipline, or rather, behavior intervention? What patterns and trends are we seeing? How are we working with the Equity Office to ensure that implicit bias and practices that address anti-racist practices when it comes to discipline are applied? Another part of the grant includes work with our Equity Team. Dr. Daryl Howard will be working with, on a leadership series within some of those identified schools to ensure that we are using a lens of equity when we are looking at our leadership practices that impact our decision-making, that impact student outcomes, including suspensions.
And that's very similar to the work that began pre, pre-pandemic with those identified schools that Shawna Kay reviewed the progress for, and, you know, those, those prac, those, those processes started with looking at what are the, what are your, you know, what are the activities that you're going to do to help, you know, revise your, your, your plan for how you address, you know, student disciplinary removals? But I'll add a very concrete example for you. When we look at our root, looked at our root causes, one of them was inconsistent implementation of evidence-based interventions, another was lack of continual supports and services. So one of the things that you all did, and this is just a small example, but has, has a big impact, that helps with that continual supports and services and implementation of interventions, is that you supported our, the number of social workers that we have available, specifically for us initially was within those programs and services for students with disabilities. So previous to our allocation of additional, I don't know if you remember, there were eight additional social workers that were added. We had social workers who were going between multiple schools, supporting those, support those students who have our, 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 our needs in that area. And, you know, what we found is, was there were challenges with how effective that was. Students didn't know whether that person that they rely on when they're in a crisis was going to be there on a day-to-day basis. You know, they want to be able to, they need to be able to knock on that door to have access to that, that, that person when they need it, not when it's scheduled for them to be there, right? And so it, it was not a very efficient practice. It allowed us to have that, the social workers available to all of those sites on a full-time basis. And we did a, we did a review, I visited all of those programs and, and met with the principals who said, the difference between having that person here full-time and having a multidisciplinary team with the psychologist, the social worker, and either the resource teacher or behavior support teacher at the elementary level, who's there full, those folks are there full-time to support those students consistently, is huge. And so when we looked at that pre-pandemic data and then the data that Shawna Kay showed later, we are actually, we made such improvements in some of those schools specifically, especially elementary schools that have those services in place, that we remove, we're going to be removing some of those schools from our, our, our needs list because, you know, I'm not going to have a school on there that had zero, they had zero suspensions, right? So moving forward, you know, that school was able to make, through changes in their plans, through the, through the additional resources, they did not suspend any student, African-American students with disabilities in that, in that, in that school for la, last year's data. So that's the kind of impact, but, so those were two root causes that we began to address, and so that allocation of resources and, and additional interventions helped, you know, in that case, make some, some significant impact. We're just now digesting the data from, you know, last year's school, last, last year's suspension data and helping it to, you know, look where we can make improvements, and then we'll also see where schools made some, some improvements to look at, you know, well, what specifically did they do that, you know, we can help to, to spread across other settings?
And all of our work intersects, a good example of that is, you know, I've sat at this policy committee table before, when we were discussing House Bill 725 and changes that it required from the state to impact school discipline policies, or in our case, behavior intervention policies. And some of the requirements, including implementing restorative approaches, restorative practices, restorative justice, trauma-informed care and support, that all came through that policy that was then applied to the code of conduct, does have an impact on, on suspensions overall and therefore on suspensions that may also impact students with, with special service needs. So it's, while the grant is our focus and what we're doing in the grant is probably going to have the most direct impact, there are a lot of pieces that are included in this work that touch all of us.
Thank you. So you may have mentioned it, but I missed it. So suspension is the end, no suspensions is the end goal, but what are some of the intermediary successes, for the lack of a better word? So if we say you're, no suspensions and, well, I'll just leave it like that. So schools need support, as you have indicated, in order to help students with the needs that they have that sometimes lead to suspensions. Do you monitor referrals to, like, the teacher, some kind of classroom-level interaction, some kind of?
We're smiling because we just looked at this incident data, and I'll let Shawna Kay talk about that.
So it's just, I guess what I'm saying is, some of the feedback that we hear in the community is that by selling people that, our goal is to suspend, to, to get rid of suspensions, that if we don't support schools, then the kids are in the school building, in the classroom without the support and being disruptive, which inter, intercept, interferes with learning, of course.
Right.
If I could just say one second, one piece of that, Shawna Kay, is that, you know, our goal is really to, to not be, not be disproportionately suspending any group of students. So, so I, so if, you know, if you look back at our presentation, it's really to come within those risk ratios and to be, and to be applying the practices equitably and to not have any, any student group that is being, you know, that is at a higher risk or being suspended at a, at a, at a rate that is considered through the formula to be at a higher risk.
So I hope I'm making myself clear, so what are some of the, the steps that schools are taking, some intermediate measures to show that they are not just ceasing all suspensions, but they are working along the way?
Absolutely. So, once again, I'm going to restate, Mr. Lynch, it's not the goal of no suspensions. We know that suspensions do happen. It's the goal of the state that suspensions are not so disproportionate, that we don't have African-American male students being suspended at five times the rate of all other students, or that we don't have students who are American Indian or Alaskan natives being identified for IEPs at a much higher rate than other students. And so some of those things come down to, first and foremost, I would say, being aware of it. So sometimes if something is happening that where we have a bias around, or a policy or a practice that's not working for a specific community group, we might not even be aware of it. And so the first thing is shining a light on it and being aware of what is happening. The second thing is, and Mr. Lynch mentioned the, the serious incident dashboard, it's one of the tools that we can use to see, when suspensions do happen, what are they for? Like, what are the most common incidents where students are suspended for? Where they're happening? How practices are not applied evenly across the board? What's causing the disproportionality in the first place? It goes back to teacher learning and leader learning as well.
But any, any measures in place? So for example, one example that I've heard is the student is acting out in class and constantly being kicked out of class, and the reason that I, I understood was, well, he hasn't had, he's on a list to be assessed for additional services, and that list is very long, and therefore, until he gets that assessment, he's going to continue to have trouble maintaining his or her self in a learning environment. So that could be an indicator of your progress towards reducing suspensions is, all right, we are doing well in terms of making sure that students get the assessment that they need so that they are getting the services that they need. I'm, I'm looking for intermediate measures to show that you are, a school is making progress towards the end goal.
So from a broader perspective, we have several different stops along the road before a student is identified as a student with a disability who requires special education and related services. So schools have EMT. Educational management teams where student is having issues with attendance, for example, or is having behavior issues, is having academic troubles, that student can be, be referred to that team, and it's the first step of problem solving. What can we do within the school's four walls to meet the student's needs? If it's attendance, do we need to reach out to the PPW so that they can provide support to the, to the family? If it's academics, what do the students' assessments inside, in the classroom look like? Do we need to provide some additional interventions? Do we need to provide a tiered approach to giving them more intensive interventions than their classmates? If that's not working, and we have to consider whether or not a student requires anything else, whether it's a 504 plan for accommodations because they have an identified disability, or it is whether or not they have a disability under the IDA, then that is when we would be considering whether or not the student needs to be evaluated. The challenge, if we look at the last two, two and a half years with COVID, has been that assessments have, students who may need assessments, may have, it may have taken longer to get to do the actual standardized assessments where we would consider whether or not a student is eligible for special education services for several reasons. When schools closed, schools, school systems were not able to do virtual assessments, for example, for student, either psychological or educational assessment. Were not prepared to do psychological and educational assessments. So in some ways, that pushed back.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess my question is, is that an indicator towards the larger goal? Are you looking at a, a three or four things that are going to drive to the end result? Is that one?
Yeah, so just to finish up that thought, even if that occurred, schools are still putting things in place to meet those students' needs. So they're still benefiting from the work that we're doing and within the CCEIS grant, or they're still being provided support with their counselors. Our, for, in, within special education, our indicators are clear and legally defined. What progress is students making? Are we meeting to determine whether or not we need to provide additional resources? And so we do that work on, on the ground daily with our teachers and general education and special educators.
So I, one of the things that I can talk about is something very specific. So one of the things that we can look at and that we have looked at is, at schools with high percentages of exclusionary practices, being able to sit with them and doing a review of, okay, this was a suspension, and what was it for? And, and was it an appropriate measure? Does it truly hold the student accountable? What we can do with that student as they reintegrate back into the population to make sure we address the root cause of the behavior so that we don't have that same student suspended again, and again, and again? And so talking about alternatives to suspension, talking about how we use our programming, for example, such as Alternative 1 in our secondary schools. One of the things that I would like to thank the board for is the implementation of the restorative justice coaches at our secondary schools last year were very impactful. And this year, it was voted to move that also to elementary schools, so providing those stipends for both secondary and now elementary, making it all schools that there is someone on-site to be able to support in applying those practices when discipline has occurred, and then preventative practices before discipline is needed. So an example of that might be two students get into a small altercation, and what that might look like is the requirement to engage in circles, to come to an agreement, to engage in a safety plan, to bring families together to solve the overall issue that are causing the disagreements between the students, and to help them work with an adult that's going to help them to make better choices on what to do when they have conflict. It might be being assigned to Conflict Resolution Centers of Montgomery County, who's a partner. So having people in place to be able to work not just on the teaching of restorative practices and approaches, but to be able to do the work. And this year, for the first time, we have that in all 210 schools. So that is the service of that $3,000 stipend at the elementary school level and the $6,000 stipend at the secondary level. And we can see some of the impacts of that at our secondary schools who have completed one full year under that program or measure.
All of those positions are filled?
Those are positions that are already housed within schools, so those are not additional vacancies. They are stipends granted to school-identified coaches within each school. And schools have the ability to identify more than one individual. For example, a high school might say, we would like two RJ coaches at $3,000 apiece instead of one, and they would split the hours. But they would be able to hold circles with students, they would be able to meet with students in a mentoring capacity, they would be able to work with students that may be lower level here, class cutting. So some of those in-school suspensions or out-of-school suspensions can be preventative, but when they happen, there can be somebody there to address the root cause. but when they happen, there can be somebody there to address the root cause, to repair the harm, to restore, to reduce the likelihood that they will happen again, which then impacts overall suspension numbers.
Ms. Silvestri, I like the example that you gave because it, it highlights a couple of things. So a student who is, you know, for whom the school is struggling to manage the behavioral needs and they're relying or they're waiting on, you know, the, the assessment process. And, and I assume you're talking about the assessment process for special education eligibility or additional services, maybe the student's already identified. And I think all too often, you know, folks see, you know, the identification of special education as kind of the cure or the fix. And the reality is the strategies that can be implemented, you know, should be implemented early on, as, as Ms. Wiles mentioned. And so one of the data points that we looked, that I looked at, it was this consult process that we have when a school asks for help and support for a variety of reasons. It could be for academic needs or it could be for behavioral needs. And so we looked just at the ones where a school identified, they came to us in central office. They, they completed this, this form that we've created for them to say, if you need technical assistance around this area, you know, complete this. And so when I looked at the data where they indicated behavior was in need, only less than a third, around 27%, had already in place a behavior intervention plan, which is kind of a coordinated way for, for the school to say, here are the strategies that we're going to use. The parent has input and they're aware, but only a third of the students where schools were saying, we need help, had they already done that step. So for me, a, a success step along the way will be to see an increase, and that's not a special education process. The development of a functional behavior assessment and a behavior plan can be done for any student, okay? And so for me, a success would, would to say, you know, early intervention, using the tools that are available to you, we will help you, we will coach you, we will give you whatever, you know, if you need additional strategies to earlier intervene. But that scenario you, you proposed to me is a team that's waiting for somebody to come and, 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 you know, and they're thinking that if the student is identified with, you know, with, with eligibility for special education, that that's going to be somehow, you know, a cure-all, or maybe they're looking at placement in, in some other setting in one of those categories that we mentioned, you know, in, in a more restrictive setting outside of their school, and that that's going to be the fix. And so unfortunately, too often, that's kind of the mindset, that this is going to be the cure and that, and that that student needs to be served somewhere else. And so that, you know, what we need to do is work on that mindset and focus on the earlier intervention and that these strategies are in play or could be in place for all students.
Thank you. And I'll pause, I'll stop, so take it up too much time. But you said data points, you meant two words, and success, success practices, success, you just used the word success measure, no success?
So I'm not sure, I can't remember. So we, we, I, I looked at the, the data from our, our, our consult data, our special education consult data, which can be for general education students as well. Often we get consults for students for whom, like your, like the example you gave where the school feels like the student is eligible and they want help with the process. And so we could, we can look at the data points like, you know, what interventions have been put in place prior to, you know, to that, what early interventions have been put in place? That's a data point.
Thank you.
Yep. So I have a few questions. Some of what I have written down to ask about, Ms. Silvestri sort of touched on, I'm not sure I have full clarity, but I want to start with, on slide 30, middle school number four. Sorry, but it is kind of, you know, the elephant in the room type of situation. So I'm curious, you know, what happened there? What, what, what were the factors that would have one school? You, you said there were multiple factors. I'm just curious, like, how something like that happens?
So as I mentioned, this is data that we've just had a chance to analyze from the, you know, from our complete set from last year. So this is new information for us that we are looking at. We're also using it to revise the schools, as I had mentioned earlier, that we're going to be working with moving forward to redefine which schools need to be a part of those activities I mentioned. So the, so the, the response is, we don't know yet. So we need to, we need to take a closer look. And one of the reasons why, you know, we, we, Shawna Kay listed the schools in the way she did is because we have, you know, we, we have to have those conversations with principals and, and, and begin those discussions, you know, with them first in order to, to, to head down the, the road of putting those plans in place. And so we're at the initial stages of that data that she shared. So that's, that's fairly new information for us.
And I think it's important to note that the majority of the schools identified are schools with social-emotional support programs. So in terms of, and we should be disproportionate in, in none of our programs, but in terms of students that come to the environment with a need that we are already aware of, especially around, it's a social-emotional need, that's why they're specifically in that program, they would be clustered within that school because they attend the program within that school. So you, you may see a higher incidence of certain behaviors because the goals for those behaviors support the needs of those students being within those school programs in the first place.
But do we not notice during the school year that there was an issue and that we could potentially address ahead of time? I mean, I, I get that this is, you know, one, a snapshot of one year essentially, but what do we do as that school year is going on and we're starting to see kids from, you know, one particular school being really struggling, or the school struggling with the kids, whatever it might be, like how are we as a system addressing it rather than waiting to the end of a year to say, oops, there's a problem here?
Right. And that comes back to some of the upgrades that we have, including working with the school leadership team and examining that data through an equity lens, examining that data through an RJ lens. So making sure that we have regular scheduled meetings with those schools to be able to review that data. For example, I can tell you that from being in school July 1st, start of summer school, to present as of yesterday, suspensions are 29 and last year at the same time, they're 39. Last year at the same time, are third, they're currently 29, last year at the same time, 39. So already 10 less. And we can see where those schools are starting to suspend and what the issues are. And we can address those schools in a more individualized basis. But one of the things that I believe has been added to the plan, and Phil, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is being able to have our teams to be able to meet with schools to engage in that data chat. So something like school number four, as it's happening, if we see those trends rising, we can evaluate the effectiveness of the implementation of our plan.
Okay, because, you know, obviously staffing is a big concern. I know, you know, just even finding special education teachers has still been very challenging for us, making sure that we're doing everything we can to be adequately staffed and, and stuff. But I was curious, you know, if you look at other things, factors like, you know, is there a new principal there? Is there a, a principal that maybe needs a new, a change? Or is there, you know, what are we looking at to how we do identification that's not necessarily considered significantly disproportionate and those type of things?
So there are many factors and like, Mr. Lynch said, this is new data to us, but there are many factors that, that impact a school and their performance, both in the positive and both in areas of growth. And that's something that we have to continue to examine, but those are good points. Some of the schools that we did look at, you could see there might have been a change in leadership. There might have been a change in staffing. There might have been specific issues within the community. It's one of the reasons that in the new grant, one of the things that is written in is a focus on leader learning and a focus on leader learning through an equity lens with our Equity Initiatives Unit.
Okay, well, so thank you. Part of the reason I bring it up is because there's, you know, I've heard from, you know, one or two middle school students to Ms. Silvestri's point, or I think kind of a little bit. But, you know, I wanted to know how we're ensuring that we don't fall into a reverse action pattern. You know, I've heard from particularly, like I said, a couple of middle schools where they feel like they can't discipline the kids and they're, they don't know, you know, how to address it. And it's, is it a leadership change that's needed? Is it us as policymakers who need to do something? You know, I, I don't know what the answer is, which is why I'm asking you guys. So, but we do hear from parents who say, you know, there's other kids being disruptive and you guys are so worried about disciplining people that now my child's being affected and that's not fair either. And then also concerns about parents paying for private testing because of the backlog of kids that need to be evaluated through our system.
Well, I was, I was just going to add, I'm not going to speak to the last point at this moment, but I would just add that, you know, the, I keep referring to it as the discipline policy, but it has a wonderful new name, the behavioral, and I just can't remember. But the policy that you all wrote in that I sat at the table and helped to present to you, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't take suspensions out of the continuum, nor does the code of conduct. So it's still, you know, it's still a part of that, of the, that continuum. And I just wanted to, to make that clear. It's more a matter of making sure that, you know, that, that we're using those earlier intervening approaches as well, including the restorative justice approach and practices.
Some of the schools that we are looking at, you mentioned a really good point about some of that, that reversal. I think it may surprise folks to know that some of those schools are already high suspension schools, which shows us that even within the suspensions, it's not necessarily working. And so the fix can't be to apply more suspensions to already high suspension schools because we can see that currently it's not something that's making a change, either in public perception, student experience, or, or in impact. And so we have to be more innovative than that in thinking about what our kids best need. And so not thinking about it in terms of, we have to get rid of suspensions altogether. It's a part of the continuum. We understand that. But asking ourselves, is what we're doing working? And that includes, yeah, that includes suspension, right? It, it's a, I'd love to sit down and, and take a look at this if folks are interested in understanding that some of those same schools where, where we get those messages, they're already high suspension schools. So suspending more, I don't think is the answer. And, and we don't have the full answer, we won't at this table, but we are willing to explore the many other factors. And I do believe the CCIES grant that's written for this year does explore factors that we haven't explored before. So we've talked about factors that impact policy. We've talked about factors that impact staffing. Mr. Lynch has talked about the addition of the, the social workers that have existed in Office of Special Education within specific discrete programs. All of those factors, but we've added now that targeted equity lens. We've added leadership, like looking at, at leadership around this. And we've added not just professional development, but on-site support, which we think are going to be factors that help us to continue to reduce some of these numbers. And I do want to say, because I think it's important, while we remain disproportionate, I cannot discount the work of a school that may be disproportionate, that had 109 suspensions in 1819 and has worked to reduce those suspensions to 59. That school may still be disproportionate, but it is progress. And as we continue to make progress, we're going to have to do a deeper investigation of evaluating what we're doing specifically that works and doesn't work. So we talked about middle school number four on that chart, but there's also middle schools that have made massive changes. So what is the difference in the application of the plan that, that has been implemented in school A versus school B, right? And it could be in leadership. It could be in fidelity of implementation. So those are things that we're going to have to examine with a closer lens as we evaluate what's going to work school to school and even more broader.
If I may, that was my question earlier, was what are your data points that you know are best practices in our system because you, you've seen them work? That you are now tracking as you help other schools with this?
Beyond state compliance type of stuff?
Right. So one addition is on the dashboard. This was just included last year for the first time. Schools have to track in their dispositions. Dispositions would be the response to an incident. Could be anything. So class cutting, tardies, a fight. They have to track exactly how that behavior intervention or that discipline has been applied. And before you had more limited categories of response, in suspension, in-school suspension, in-school intervention, detention, conference, check-in, checkout. But now there are more restorative practices that are applied to those dispositions. So even when a school leader goes in to, to conduct a disposition, aside from using the code of conduct, they can see in those dispositions other items that might be available. There's a restorative practices tab. I can call in a specialist to help me work through how to work best with this student or this family. I can add some things such as SUPRI, which allows for, instead of suspending for low use, first-time drug use, I can implement four classes that parents have to attend with their kids in lieu of that, right? So those have been additions to the system that we can now track and see with data as well, so.
I'm really glad to hear that because that was another one of my little points was, do we also look at the severity of discipline and track that, that as an aspect? And looking, like I said, going beyond just what qualifies for compliance sake.
I'll just add, the evaluation methods I shared a little earlier are in the presentation. And it talks about looking at the disaggregated disciplinary removals, you know, throughout the course of the year. So, and, and also looking at the restorative justice observations of those staff that are participating in that activity. So those were, that's what, those are two that are listed as the evaluation methods.
Okay, my last little point slash question. Schools with programs, you know, specific programs in them, obviously we staff them differently than, you know, schools that don't have specified programs in them. But do we separate at all how we look at the data at a school with a, you know, high population that's not their home school versus like the general ed, you know, without, I think you understand what I mean, hopefully, like, do we separate that data out at all so that it's not a reflection on the school as a whole necessarily if they've got a program where they're dealing with kids with more challenges and things like that?
We look at both sets of data. From the special education side, we're required to look at just on an individual student level and what it looks like for particular programs. And that's part of, as I mentioned earlier, some of the monitoring that MSDE does with us is the number of students. So when we look at, in special education, the impact of the work that's being done in specific programs in specific schools, we're drilling down to what's the profile of, of students? And are, is, is this program working? Do we need to add additional supports, additional staffing, additional mental health providers in those programs? In the broader perspective, we're looking at, we can look at whether or not the numbers, the disproportionality numbers and the significant disproportionality numbers in a particular school are weighted because of a program.
Yeah, because I've even heard from principals who've said, you know, it's hard for us to ever get some of these numbers down because it's just the nature of the population is, needs more support than that, what they're able to have and how we are determining how many students in each program we send to one particular school? Are we looking at whether or not we should have a, like, you know, one school that has more supports and can focus strictly on, on students' special needs and things like that? So just something we talked about in past Special Populations Committee meetings that I'm not sure where we ever ended up with, so.
Okay, slide 13. The state wants you to do disproportionality with their formula. I'm not getting it. We know by the example that is there that African-American students are suspended 20% is their number. Then we put it together with 6.67% for other students and it comes out to be three for the risk. I don't get that when we talk about disproportionality. I mean, why is that important when we know that the African-American students are already 20, they've got 20% of their absences or their referrals? I mean, the state's trying to pull a fast one on us, but go ahead.
I'd like to say that they are. Unfortunately, I can't. So it's relative to your total population of students. So this, you know, this is MSDE's example, but I think you have to look at it in terms of we're, for example, just our population, we have over 160,000 students. We have 12% or so. or so students who are eligible for special education. So what that number looks like for us would be different than it would look for a smaller county. So it really is, and what that number looks like for any specific racial or ethnic group within our county, in any of the three areas of identification, placement, and suspension may look different. So it really is a number that's relative to the demographics, the number of students with IEPs eligible for special education that you have in your district.
And I think Mr. Lynch said something in a previous meeting that really stood out to me. Disproportionality for the identification of American Indian students and Alaskan natives. Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we were speaking about five students?
Yeah, I was gonna say...
And we are disproportionate because...
Because there's so few.
Right.
And it cannot be statistically correct to say what their representative, representation is in terms of suspensions, because there's so few of them. And usually, when we have so few, we have the arrows going the other way, and we say, you know, don't consider this in terms of the general. Anyway, but I'm really concerned about what the state is doing here. And when we talk about disproportionality, I'm really concerned about the charts that we saw. They're very nice, and you see some went up and some went down, but we have no idea who, which schools they are, which schools increased or decreased their suspensions. I just find it incomplete. And then I was looking at page 31, and elementary school number four went down, but it has nothing there. So, but you're saying that it has zero?
Yes, okay.
Went to zero. And then there was, well, there was another one that I looked at, but then I noticed there was this little tiny orange line, if you really put your glasses on, you'll see it. Okay, so anyhow, this doesn't represent to me how our suspensions are, or how our categories are for special education students. And my last question is, with special education students, we have a higher percentage suspended? What kind of training do people have in manifestation?
So, our data, it will be interesting. I'll just say that for the previous school year. There has been, and I don't have the exact numbers, but there have been quite a few manifestation meetings. And teams are supported by our Resolution and Compliance Unit for every manifestation meeting that occurs in the district.
Can I ask real quick what that means? I don't know what that means.
Our Resolution and Compliance Unit is in an office within the Office of Special Education. We have instructional specialists who are trained to help convene and review the legal requirements for manifestation meetings. Manifestation meetings are meetings that occur when a student with an IEP is either going to go over 10 days within a school year of disciplinary removals, or has already gone over. So this would be also students who would, who are being proposed for expulsion, students who are being proposed for interim alternative educational settings, 45-day placements for very specific, severe, and significant behavioral infractions. And within that office, we have three instructional specialists who, and one instructional specialist for Section 504, that has the same requirements for meeting and making a determination through the manifestation determination process, whether or not that that incident is related to their disability. And so what's important about that is, we don't wanna punish students because they're manifesting their disability. We wanna find ways to provide resources, we wanna make revisions to their behavior intervention plans, we wanna revise their IEPs, we wanna figure out whether or not there are other things that we can do within the, within the school system to support them, so that we're not removing them. So to your question, Dr. Daca, yes, we have people who are very well-trained in the manifestation determination process, there's support from Central Office for each and every one of those meetings.
Thank you. And now, back to Ms. Silvestri's question about the student acting out in class, we know that we've seen that a lot. I think our question has to be, are we going to do an educational management team on this student to make sure that it's not, or it is, a special education-related? But also, you were talking about the interventions we're now doing with restorative justice and having people who are experts in that, and having a social worker at each school. That way, students have more people who they can talk with about what is going on with them. And I'm not saying that the social worker is a psychologist or anything like that, but sometimes students just need that kind of guidance or that kind of belief that there's somebody that cares about them, and maybe that will happen, and we won't have so many kids acting out. But as I said, these, these statistics don't help me very much when I wanna know about African-American and Latino kids being suspended, either special ed or in regular ed.
So we can provide that for you as an update. With the demographics broken down by race and ethnicity, we were very careful, though, not to place the names of the schools...
I know.
...on the document as a public document. Not that they're a secret, it's simply that we would like an opportunity to be able to meet with those schools and to review that data. One of the things that I'd like to point out, we talked about slide 31, there's an elementary school there that went down and it's blank. And elementary school number four was identified as disproportionate based off of one student. And so while it is, all of our children are a priority and a concern, we know that when you have those smaller populations, it is easier to become disproportionate, because it skews the representation. That's why the ratio, as explained by Ms. Wiles, makes a lot of sense. And so that might not be a school that we focus on, because it's representative of one student or two students. And so that's really important to look at as well, when, you know, examining the practices.
Yeah, sometimes numbers is better than percentages and whatever, and vice versa.
Absolutely.
I don't know, I'm still on the same point. Disproportionality is what we're talking about today, yet we do not know that that middle school, what's the kind of population breakdown in that middle school? And if it's not, if they're not African-American and Latinos, and it's everybody, that's one thing to look at. I just, I'm just finding not enough information, I'm sorry.
As an update as well, one of the other pieces of information, because I think what, the way that we look at the data is twofold. One is, as you said, the numbers, the numbers, the percentages based on the various racial ethnic groups. And that, that's work that we do internally for MSDE purposes and disproportionality. And I wanted to go back and clarify, the reason why they have the formula, which may seem skewed, is because they're comparing amongst the various aliés, information that wouldn't necessarily be comparable.
And they wanna look good.
Right.
So then they have this little nasty formula that makes it look better. I just have a problem with that. But it's not your fault, state.
Glad to hear. But what we can, so each year, we receive annually the Significant Disproportionate Report from MSDE, and it gives us for each of those racial and ethnic groups in each of the various areas, what that ratio is. So we can provide that information. It is not the numbers, it's not the raw data, but it at least gives, you're able to look over time and compare where we have been as it relates to disproportionality and that 2.0 threshold that we're expected to be under.
Can I say one last quick question? In terms of, we're talking about disproportionality, and this is basically, pretty much all been based on disciplinary actions and things like that, but in terms of the identification, I'm curious as to what causes people to say that we are disproportionately identifying students as having special needs or needing special education services? Is it that we shouldn't? Because I get concerned about, again, that reverse trending of saying, so we won't identify them, and then they don't get the services that they need, or they say they're doing well, so we're gonna remove the services all of a sudden, and then they're not doing so well anymore, and things that there's...
That's not an area where, you know, we are current, we are currently not considered as a school district that's under or over identifying students in general with special education. We have seen an increase of about 1%, which is pretty significant, just over the time that I've been the director, which I use that framework, not for me personally, but I use that framework from about 2016. Maybe I shouldn't phrase it that way.
I was gonna say, it's not your fault either.
No, but it's gone from about 11 and 1/2% of our population, of overall population of students being identified with disabilities to roughly 12 and 1/2% from 2016 to current. And there's some, you know, there are some factors that you can consider there, one being, if you're looking at our overall percentage of a school district, remember, our enrollment has, there have been some periods where our enrollment has either stayed flat or dipped to some extent, so that's what you're, you're using the percentage of. And then there's been, but, but, but the population of students being identified for disabilities has not, has not dipped, it's continued to grow over that time period. So, but that 11 and 1/2, 12 and 1/2 percentage puts us within the range, the average range across the country.
Okay, in all categories?
I'm just, I'm just referring to all categories of identification for students with a disability, yes, just in general, special education. I'm just, I'm just referring to the, to the identification of students with disabilities in general, because I think that's what you were referring to, is the...
Well, I'm trying to just make sure, ensure that we aren't disproportionately identifying students.
We are.
But, but if we are, is our, we, is it...
For that, for that one specific, I thought you were referring to, I thought you were referring to overall identification. For that specific group, yes, we are.
And on the other hand, you're talking about the interventions you want to do when you see that there is a problem. You've mentioned a list of things of working with the schools that have concerns and how they might help them, and how staff can be available to work with them on it. So I know that this is a starting point for that, I realize that. And I really appreciate the fact that you're kind of spelling that out for us so that we can see it. So the next time you come, we will have a better idea of whether that worked or not. And I know that you talked about, well, do these things really work? And we, we know that that's a concern, and we hope that you can be able to help us with that. Anything else?
I know we still have more slides, so I'll hold to see if we have time.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the last piece of the presentation, we wanted to provide some updates on the restraint and seclusion law. And in the spring, when we, when the Office of Special Education presented to this committee, we talked about the anticipated change to Maryland law, where public schools were, would no longer be permitted to use seclusion as a behavior management strategy. So we wanted to provide an update as to where we are in that process. So as of, as of July 1st, 2022, Maryland law has changed. Seclusion is strictly prohibited in all Maryland public school settings. Schools, non-public schools are still permitted to use it. However, there's been some additions to the law with regard to their use of seclusion. Physical restraint is still permitted as a last resort for students who may pose a danger to themselves or to other students. Next slide.
Can I ask a real quick question?
Sure.
By seclusion, I understand the state law aspect of it, but having somebody spend time in the wellness room, or, you know, the specific rooms that we've been setting up for kids to be, who need to take a break, that the state's not counting that as seclusion?
No, seclusion has a very specific legal definition. It is when a student is placed in a room where they cannot exit. Where, and there must be a window, there must be someone who's able to look in and observe their behaviors, but they're not allowed to exit the room. So in one of the following slides, I'll talk a little bit more about those rooms that you just referred to, that we're trying to build capacity to use those more, more in our schools, where students may need a break. In response to the change in state law, all of our principals with seclusion rooms in their buildings were notified prior to the law changing, and throughout the summer, that there would be changes, and there would also be additional training provided by the Office of Special Education. We completed surveys to identify professional learning needs and any resources that principals may think they need in order to use that space that they were formerly using for seclusion rooms. And these, when we talk about the use of seclusion rooms, we're talking about students who have very significant aggressive, perhaps violent behaviors, where they need to be removed so that they're not harming themselves, they're not harming others. The Office of Special Education collaborated with facilities and maintenance to ensure that the spaces that were located in classrooms, doors were removed, and if they were in corridors, the doors were locked so that they would not be in use. We're also, as a phase two of this process, reimagining how to use those spaces, because they're open rooms that principals may be able to use for other, for other means. And we are continuing to work with school-based staff on professional learning opportunities so that we can use evidence and research-based strategies to help with de-escalation and safety techniques when working with these students, because our students that have these needs are still coming to school every day. And we wanna ensure that our staff is safe, we wanna ensure that the students are safe, so we've been working, putting a lot of work and effort over the summer, in the spring, and currently on an ongoing basis, training staff to support learning de-escalation strategies. Next slide. One of the requirements of the law is that MSDE now requires if a student has more than 10 incidents of physical restraint, there should be no incidents of seclusion in a public school. More than 10 incidents of physical restraint in a school year, we are required to notify MSDE, we're also required to intervene with that specific school on behalf of that specific student to find out what the issues are that would have necessitated that, that level of behavioral support, and then what do we need to put in place in order to help to manage that behavior, which goes to some of your concerns, Ms. Silvestri, that we are working, not just within this law, but now we are certainly want to be working closely when we have students who really have some behaviors that need to be addressed. And we're also, with our point of contact in the Office of Special Education, developing a system where we're not waiting until day 10 or day 11. We're looking at, okay, now you have five incidents of restraint and seclusion, restraint, not seclusion, restraint. What do we need to do to support the student, the staff, the teacher that works with the student every day? So we're going, on the student level, we're working closely with the schools. We're continuing to do CPI nonviolent crisis intervention training, verbal de-escalation strategies that are taught through the CPI training, proactive implementation of our five-team member crisis teams, which are in each school. And then we have newly rolled out UCRU training. Next slide. UCRU is a trauma-informed, hands-off approach to managing student behaviors that may rise to the level of what previously would have been in a, placing a student in a seclusion room or using physical restraint. It is a system of using pads, where the teachers are trained to use the pads versus putting hands on students. And so we continue to, we've purchased those items for schools, and on a rolling basis, we're providing that training to staff so that they can properly use the... we're providing that training to staff so that they can properly use the U-CARU supports to de-escalate behaviors. Next slide. Any questions on the section that was just presented, or anything else that we presented during this presentation?
I don't know. U-CARU is a little scary.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I sure...
I don't know. I think they tried to do something like that before they had the name of this, and rolling kids in mats.
Yeah.
And then a parent protested that, felt that it wasn't good for breathing.
Eight years ago, or six years ago, or something like that, we removed that practice. Remember?
I do. This is, yeah, this is a, you know, different methodology that I wouldn't equate to, you know, those practices that I think all of us would consider not appropriate. So this is, you know, this is a response to be able to, you know, they're using de-escalation strategies in terms of the language, but they're also trying, but they're also keeping themselves and others safe through the use of the pads. And it's, I'll be honest, it's an approach that I'm still learning about, but that we have our expert, who has been our lead on training staff in the nonviolent crisis intervention approaches. She has immersed herself in that, and is helping to spread those strategies across those schools that previously may have been using seclusion as a strategy, and using this as an alternative. So it is something that other systems have engaged with as well, and, you know, other non-public schools as well have used this process.
Does it work? And how do you know? I mean, I'm not trying to be snarky, I'm just saying, like, to me, this aspect of seclusion was to remove the student from the situation, and that, to me, looks like, if the teacher's putting on pads and there's other kids, are they making the other kids leave the room? Then isn't that kind of seclusion as well, but not in a separate room?
Well, a couple, a couple. Can we go back to the U-CARU slide? There's a video that we can show that shows how U-CARU works. But before, if, before we click on that slide, this is newly used, but we looked at what would be the best, we did not want to leave schools in the situation where we're saying, okay, you can't use seclusion, figure it out. So we did look at various programs, and spoke to different LEAs to find out what they have been using, because several LEAs have long since stopped using seclusion as a behavior management strategy. MCPS, along with a couple others, was still, prior to this law changing, there was only a small number of LEAs that were still using seclusion. So we're moving closer to what the other LEAs, although we have a different population of students who we're able to manage and keep in our school system. But what we, one other thought, but what we are doing is monitoring the success of the use of this new program. And so we have the capacity, we have a staff person who is dedicated to working on issues of restraint and seclusion with our non-public schools, and we're monitoring, as we roll this out, how effective it is. And if it isn't effective, we won't continue to use it, we'll start looking for strategies that are more appropriate for our students.
Okay.
All right. Any others? Ms. Sylvester, you have another question?
Yeah, some little things along the presentation. You talked about root causes and examining our implicit or explicit bias. How is that determined?
That's a great question, and it's actually something that we're, you know, we're taking a deeper dive into. So when this process first started for us, back in the 2019, 2020 school year, there were, there were different groups that were presented, different stakeholder groups that were presented questionnaires, and provided, and were able to provide feedback around what they felt were the root causes. At that time, I wasn't directly involved in that process, but it was done at some select schools, it was done with different stakeholder groups, and so that's how that was, that information was pulled out, as that being one of the root causes. You know, we also are hoping to gather some additional data when, from, in that area, when we are able to look at the anti-racism audit. But right now, one of the pieces of feedback that we actually received from the state was that, you know, we'd like you to take a closer look at that and provide some additional data around that area. So you're pulling out something that I think we need to examine more fully, and I hope to also receive some additional insight into when we look at the results of that anti-racism report. Right now, the data, to answer your question, that we're using is from that original analysis. It's also, it's also looked at, and I see Shawna K. with her hand on the button, it's also looked at in, through a different, a few different lenses that I think she's going to reference, which are, when you look at the different types of incidents and suspensions, the top, the top five incident reports are really, you know, skipping class, and then the next three are, could be considered, you know, subjective areas. Insubordination, I missed one, help me out.
Insubordination, disrespect, and disruption. And they are, they are applied differently, depending on who the administrator is, depending on the school. And so looking at how they are applied more harshly to students of color does indicate that there's a certain level of bias. So more, less clearly than something like a fight, which is a little bit more concrete.
Right. So there are concrete reasons for suspensions or incidents, but when you look at the subjective areas, and you compare that to race, then you can start to make some analysis there. So that, those pieces of data, along with the historical data that was done in the original root cause analysis, are what we use to continue that as a root cause. But I think that's something that we need to continue to look at more information on.
Thank you. I just want to conclude by saying, this is such important work. We want to keep our students in the classroom, and want the classroom environment to be a positive place where students can learn to their utmost potential. And so just wanted to say that, it's how it's so important. I do think that there's that communication piece, so that families in the community understand this work. What's the right term? Not discipline, but behavioral management interventions?
So behavior intervention, safety and wellbeing.
Yeah. And I think people don't know, when you say restorative justice, a parent doesn't know what that looks like in the classroom. When you say alternative suspension, I have no idea what you're talking about. And so as you develop this work, I mean, really think about how we can communicate what this looks like, so that people don't tell us, oh, there's no discipline in the schools. Actually, there's a lot of support to prevent, you know, behavior that's not going to help learning happen in the classrooms. Then we just need to kind of figure out how to explain that to our parent community better. And I'm, just finally, this is maybe a philosophical question for the last five minutes, for another conversation, but I've never understood the need for long suspensions. I get it, sometimes you need some cooling off time, right? Okay, let's take some time, go home, let things settle. But then, what purpose does it serve to have a child out for 10 days at home doing nothing? And I'd love, I would love to hear more about what alternative suspensions are, maybe in a one-on-one meeting or something, but just a, just a big picture topic is, what's the purpose of a long suspension?
A lot of, I can't answer that philosophically, right, the second, but a lot of folks believe that when a student is suspended for, let's say, 45 days, or some people call it expelled, we call it tenancy, that they are away from the school environment, and that's it. However, our students that are suspended for long-term suspensions do report to the alternative two sites.
Yes, yes. So what about a 10-day suspension? What purpose does that serve?
Right. I'm in agreement with you. But at the alternative sites, there is support that goes beyond just the suspension. So there is kind of the relearning. It is a more therapeutic environment, it is a smaller environment to kind of help to retool some of those behaviors, so that when you return back to that homeschool site, you just didn't go away to go away. It wasn't just a punishment for punishment's sake, but there was learning that happened to help to rehabilitate you back into that environment, so that you can be more successful in the future. So in terms of those that go on to alt, I, there's a purpose there. In terms of suspensions that are midway, you're anywhere from four to 10, I think that there's a lot of different philosophies around that, that I think are worth exploring.
We used to, a couple of years ago, we used to have the, now I'm forgetting what it was called, the, what is it?
The ISS?
No, this, it was, it was a program that was, like, the city of Gaithersburg had one, that was the last one, something like G, G School or...
They were run by churches in 10...
That's it. Yeah, exactly. And so if you had like a three-day suspension or four-day suspension, you could go there, and they would collect the work from your school for you. And I don't understand why we stopped, because, I will say, I personally know a child or two who would view being suspended as a, as a vacation, as a good, a happy thing for them, not necessarily for the parents, but, so having a place where they could, yeah, G-Sharp, I think it was called, in Gaithersburg, and Sharp Street, down county, yeah. But something like that, I feel like we should probably consider looking at whether or not that's something that we should be hosting, or how we're keeping these kids engaged, rather than feeling like, well, now I can stay home and watch TV all day, or, you know, and get further behind in their studies and their workload.
Oh, I just had something about that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I am going to, so I appreciate, I was asking more about the 10-day suspension category. And I am going to go visit some alternative sites, because I haven't been before, just to get a better understanding. And I knew, I know that there are a lot of supports there. So, thank you.
So I think we have about three minutes, and the U-CARU video is less than three minutes, so if we could...
Going through a crisis of any kind is a mentally taxing experience, and if not managed correctly, it can cause long-lasting trauma. But how do you respond to a crisis in a healthy way? That's where U-CARU Systems comes in. Backed by decades of brain-based research and neuroscience, U-CARU is a simple but highly effective approach to crisis management that offers an alternative to coercive behavior techniques. U-CARU comes from the Japanese word meaning "to receive." U-CARU is a crisis management system that is based around receiving information from the actions of others. Our system is the only restraint-free intervention available that combines hands-on training, theoretical concepts, practical tools, and specialized equipment to safely manage and defuse crises. U-CARU's approach is deeply embedded with a thorough understanding of the profound neurological, biological, psychological, and social effects of trauma and aggression. This innovative system was created by direct care professionals in conjunction with clinicians working in behavioral health. U-CARU was designed specifically to help our parent organization, Grafton Integrated Health Network, respond to many of the challenges regarding staff and client safety, and the overuse of restraint and seclusion. As a result, U-CARU's philosophy of comfort versus control and trauma-informed care were developed. The success of this cutting-edge program speaks for itself. Physical restraints have been reduced by over 99%. The use of seclusion has been eliminated for over a decade. A safer, more respectful environment has been created for both the staff and clients. Client-induced staff injuries, workers' compensation premiums, lost time, and turnover have dramatically decreased, resulting in an ROI of over $27 million. Lastly, Grafton's goal mastery rate, which was 35% at the beginning of the initiative, is now over 80% for all clients. And this is just Grafton's success. Today, U-CARU is being used by hundreds of organizations across the United States and Canada, including private and public schools, behavioral health programs, psychiatric hospitals, foster care agencies, state facilities for adults, and more. We want everyone who works with U-CARU to feel empowered, inspired, and hopeful about implementing the approach in your own organization. Our team will be with you every step of the way to ensure your success. To learn more about U-CARU's innovative approach to crisis management, visit www.ucarusystems.com.
Thank you. Well, that didn't really show anything. No offense, but... Yeah. I'm like, that told me nothing about what I wanted to see, how that would work in a classroom, or what that looked like in a classroom. We're gonna have to dial up Grafton to find out. Exactly. But anyway, I just really, if there are no other questions? I really want to thank you for your presentation today, and I know we took you through the mill, but we ask a lot of questions. So Mr. Lynch, and Ms. Wiles, and Ms. John B., who was here just the other day, thank you so much for everything that you've done, and for working with us. And I also want to thank anybody who tuned in for this. This is, this is important information for our viewing audience, the parents, and the community. And I'd like to tie it into what our last meeting was about, because that, we went through the steps of how you get referred for special services. So I'm sure that's still online, and people can look at that. Anyway, thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's crazy. I'm like, where can I go? It's too...[1727.42]